Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the business session of the Dalton Town Meeting. We've got a lot of chairs up front, so nobody has to stand if they don't want to. It's not like class. I'm not going to call on you if you come and sit down and talk. Okay? So my name is Jay Ennis, and I'm your town moderator. To begin this meeting tonight, I'd like for us to stand and face the flag and say the hymn of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all. All right, so before we go any further, I want to thank everyone who has been part of the election process today. People volunteer their time to oversee taking your votes and counting your votes. Once this is all over, they put in a great effort. And can you please give them a round of applause? All right, and by way of introductions, to my right, Select Board members Tom DeGreal, Eric Moore, JoBeth Dudley. On my left, Town Administrator Jeanette Charon, and Town Attorney Nate Madolo. So we begin each of these meetings by, first of all, you know, what is our objective here? Well, we have a certain number of warrant articles that we need to get passed tonight, or whatever we want to do with them, but we need to do that as quickly as we possibly can. Nobody really wants to be here any longer than they have to be. They certainly don't want to be here until 3:00 in the morning. So please, hey, it's happened. I'm sure there are plenty of people in this room can tell you about meetings that have gone on until 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. Let's not do that. My job is to get us through this. So by way of trying to do that, there are rules of procedure. They've been posted on the website, they're posted on the door out front, and I'm going to read some of them to you right now, just so we're all clear on how we're going to go about this. So first of all, according to state law, town meetings are run by the moderator's rules. This means that the moderator sets the ground rules for the meeting, but the law also allows you to override the moderator's ruling. So, you know, I created the rules, they're out there, you don't like them, change them. So, here they are. So, Robert's rules will not be used, rather the following rules are established for the town Dalton Town meetings. The main objective is to avoid getting bogged down in procedural fragmires and to encourage free, open, and adequate debate. So, articles will be considered in the order which they appear on the warrant. The moderator or the voters may elect to change the order, if doing so will make good sense for discussion. The article number will be announced, and the text will be presented in full. The moderator will seek a person to move the motion and someone to second for consideration of that article. So an article has to be moved and put onto the floor before we discuss it. Upon being properly moved and seconded, a person, usually a selectman or the petitioner of that article, the petition for an article, will be recognized to explain and defend that article. Presentation should be to the point and as short as possible to convey the required information. After that, the article will be placed on the floor for debate and final vote. So, when we're having that debate, the following rules apply to all of the speakers. So nobody gets to speak unless the moderator, unless they're recognized by the moderator. I'm only going to recognize one speaker at a time. Dalton voters and those who have not spoken on the article will be given preference. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Will use the microphone and begin by providing his or her name and address and town of residence. Persons with physical limitations will not be required to use the microphone. Let us know when the microphone to you. All speakers are expected to direct their comments to me, the moderator, to be courteous, respectful, and to speak at issue under discussion and not to other individuals in the room. Conversation between individuals, personal attacks, and inappropriate language will not be tolerated. A moderator may choose to allow a person to respond to a question raised from the floor. Speakers should be concise and not repeat information that has already been presented. A speaker may speak only with respect to the article that's on the floor, except to make a motion to amend the article on the floor or a motion to call the question. Speakers who are repeating points previously made in the discussion or who are talking or taking excessive time will be asked to end their presentation. Motions made to amend an article must be made in writing before the end of the debate. Only one motion to amend will be allowed on the floor at one time. Motions must be worded in a positive sense. Motions which require a no vote to take a positive action will not be allowed. Here's an example. I move that the budget not be adopted. That's an unacceptable kind of motion. Calls for questions, motion to limit debate shall require two-thirds or more of those voting to pass. Motion to end debate is subject to the following limitations. Person standing in wait at the microphone or those who have been recognized as in line to speak will be allowed to speak before the call for question vote is taken, or if the moderator is of the opinion that the voters have not had adequate opportunity to discuss an issue, a call for question may be refused. Finally, the audience shall maintain decorum so that the speaker may be heard by all. If any person behaves in a disorderly manner or willfully violates any procedural rule, and after one notice from the moderator persists in such behavior, that person will be removed from the meeting. Officer Staley, are you here?
Yes, sir.
And hold on. Okay. So with that said, I will introduce and read each article. I will ask for someone to make a motion for us to consider the article and someone to second it, then I'll open the floor to questions. When it appears there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. The standard way that we will vote is by show of the pink cards that you were handed when you first came in. Make sure that you hold your card up high and keep it high until we finish counting. I will let you know that for warrant article number two, I've received a correct petition for that to be held as a secret ballot. So I'll go ahead and just introduce the concept right now. Secret ballot means that we'll have to all file up to the checklist, supervises the checklist table, that was the hardest type of saying. And you'll be issued a card that has yes and no printed on it, perforation in the middle. All you need to do is tear that card in half, deposit the side that represents your vote into the ballot box that you file on by, and the side that does not represent your vote, and go right to the trash can. The more orderly we can do this, the quicker it will go and the faster we'll get out of here. That's the point. Please.
So everybody knows, you've already provided your ID. So when you come up to get the secret ballot, all you do is show this. The park will check it off in the back when they hand you the ballot to use throughout there, okay? And we ask that those that are handicapped are allowed first, and everybody to follow.
Is everybody ready? Awesome, let's get this going. What's on our first slide? Perfect. So this is the easiest one, the one we've already done. So Article Number One, Election of the Officers, was done during the daytime voting session. Immediately after this meeting, we will count the votes, and if you get on the weather some ungodly hour tonight, you'll be able to see who won everything. Maybe. Next. Article Number Two, Operating Budget. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,2886 for the general town operations. Who moves this article?
I move this article.
I'll second it.
And I'd like to also start with an amendment. I move to amend Article Number Two to move $6,500 from the legal category to the financial administration category. This does not change the total budget appropriation request.
Are you presenting the articles now?
Certainly. And what I'd like to just do is that explain a little bit about the process. So as we considered the proposed budget and the amendment, the process is summarized as follows. The Select Board reviewed the 2024 expenditures and anticipated 2025 expenditures to determine the budget, and we went line by line. We reviewed the proposed line item budget multiple times with ample opportunity to make changes and corrections and reduce the budget. Then the Board voted to present the budget to the town for discussion and feedback at the budget hearing. After the budget hearing, the Select Board voted to present the budget as crafted, and then the budget was reviewed and approved by DRA, the Department of Revenue Administration. When the warrant and budget were presented for Select Board's signature, Eric suggested making changes, which is what the amendment is, which is moving the $6,500 to a different category. At that point, we did not have time to go back to DRA with revised budget and be able to sign the warrant and the budget in time to the required date for posting. So that's why we're making an improvement at this point. I would also like to say that I think the current requested budget is the Select Board's best estimate for the cost needed to run the town for 2025. If you'd like, we can provide some highlights to show where the major increases were, why the Board thought they were important, and the expected revenue to help offset the cost. And that's an important thing. We had a flood, major flood back in July. We had most of our roads experiencing damage. We had a lot of expense in bringing the roads up to be a passable status, except for one road, which is still not passable. We're hoping in the coming year to mitigate problems, to do work on the roads, and if Adam's here, he could address that more, but to put in bigger culverts and headers and things that will help prevent damage from floods and heavy rains in the future. We expect to get reimbursement of 75% of those costs from FEMA. So that really changes the picture in terms of the budget. And I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that. This is an opportunity to improve our roads, to make them more resilient. It seems like we have more and more rain and floods, and we don't want all our roads to be washed out again. We really want to try to prevent that, and this is our opportunity to do that.
I voted no on this Article Two, and the reason being that Article 15 of last year was required the Board to provide a detailed itemized budget for the voters at the budget hearing and to be updated monthly and made available to the public. This never happened. I asked many times for permission and never received it. I don't feel comfortable with the numbers on the budget. We did not have opportunity to work through these over the course of the year. They are much higher than taxpayers can afford. This is why I did not sign up on this budget, and I encourage you to do the same. And I am for repairing the roads. Adam's been doing a very good job of repairing those roads. We've had, I'm not no mathematician, but we've had $420,000 taken out of reserves. If I can get this right, we got $200,000 from PAN and $300,000 from the budget to take the other roads upstart. And I feel that we need to level the budget. Looking at MS 636 from 2020, it was $464,000. Then 2023 is $443,000, $443,000. 2024 is $430,000, and 2025 is $726,618. So I encourage you to vote this warrant down.
Perhaps we could move forward on some of the slides, and we show you some of the explanation. On this one, as we talked about, we had flood damage. We're really looking at, provided we are able to fulfill all these expectations, which Jeanette is doing an amazing job doing, we expect to get $1 to $1.5 million in reimbursement. And so the big part of the increase is from the Highway Department, preventive maintenance so that we can run the equipment and trucks longer and not have expensive repairs, staffing so that we can have additional staff this summer to help mitigate the roads. And then we did two equipment needs purchases. One is a backhoe, which was a replacement because the old backhoe needed so much work, and the other was an excavator, which is a new piece of equipment, and these are lease purchase agreements. Before we got the excavator, we were hiring a contractor to do the work. So it's more cost effective to be able to do the work ourselves. If you go to the next one, there are some figures. So if you look at this, we did have increases in health insurance, so our personnel costs went up. We had increases in legal. We have increased legal bills. We have a new attorney, and also, I would say, higher usage of the attorney as well. We have additional costs in the cemetery, and that's to fund a survey so that we can plot out the survey, the cemetery plots, and they can be sold. With the Highway Department, there are about $131,000 in increases. So there's personnel, which we talked about, repair maintenance, preventive maintenance on equipment, and capital, which is lease purchase agreement for the backhoe and the excavator. We also had some increases with transfer station and sewer payment. It's important to note the offsetting revenue. So for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, we're getting $8,500 in a grant. The cost of that plan is about $9,000. And there's another sheet, another slide that'll show some of these as well. With the tax warrant, we're having to pay more to have our sewer go over to Lunaber. That is passed on to the people who use the sewer system. So that will be recovered. Then we have, just based on the $131,000 in Highway Department increases noted above, if I take 75% of that, we'll get almost $99,000, $98,000 back from FEMA. We've already, since we did the budget, just after we did the budget, we received $43,000 in an actual reimbursement from FEMA. And we have a public hearing scheduled later this month, because these are considered unanticipated revenue, so we'll have a public hearing to discuss that and how we'll use the money. So if you make just those adjustments, then that brings down the difference in the budget from last year significantly. If you look at the next slide, this is just trying to categorize some of those. So we have the things we talked about that we're expecting FEMA reimbursement from. We have some things that are required or essential costs. So we had to increase our election category because the state has required us to have a tablet, which they provided in the past, and program it. We're still not sure the cost of that, so we had to take your higher estimate. The Hazard Misappropriation Plan that I mentioned, for $9,000, we have a grant for $8,500. The employee benefits, the health insurance went up. We do have $5,000 in interest. PAN is a tax anticipation note. So with the damage from the flood, we had to take out a loan to cover our costs for the end of the year before tax revenue started to come through. Because we're not sure the timing of the FEMA reimbursements, we've left that PAN note open, because if we went back to the bank to get a loan, if we ran into a problem with cash flow, the interest rate would be higher and would cost us more. And it also costs us more to take out a loan, because we have to have our attorney review the paperwork, and there are bank fees and so forth. We have the sewer disposal we talked about. So, you know, we have $6,000 in the survey for the cemetery. We could conceivably put that off, but then how do we sell the plots in the cemeteries that people want to purchase? The Conservation Commission at the last minute did say they could decrease their requested budget by 500. So, you know, that's, in the budget to size, 500 is immaterial, so we could decrease it by that. And legal, we just made an amendment to request to move $6,500 from legal to financial administration. As we're talking about, obviously, we're all concerned about the budget because it impacts our taxes. And I think it's just interesting to look at how our taxes are compared to other towns. To the next slide. This is looking at towns with a similar valuation. So all of the property in our town, including utilities, is valued at $156 million. And so you can see here, two source. One is sorted by valuation. These are the ones that are closest to us in valuation. The second column is taking the saved communities and sorting it by the tax rate. So we're near the bottom in terms of our tax rate. Our tax rate looks pretty good. If you go on to the next slide, you can see that the green is our municipal taxes as a percentage of our total tax rate. So I think we all know that most of our taxes go to support the school district and also the county. And with the county, there's a county sheriff, there are the nursing homes, there's the courthouse, all of those things that are part of the county government. And basically, the municipal part of our tax rate tends to be about 20%, 25% of the total tax rate. So if you look at the next slide, this just shows the municipal tax rate compared to surrounding towns. Because the towns with equal valuations, you know, they're not necessarily near us. Except for Carroll, we have the lowest municipal tax rate. You can see how it goes, varies some from year to year, and some of that is because of the timing of when properties are reevaluated. Like our tax rate, total tax rate was different last year because we did a reevaluation. The property values went up, so our tax rate went down. But Carroll is kind of a unique community because they have the Mount Washington Hotel and Red Woods there. So that really changes the picture. But if you look at, you know, our local communities, Whitefield, Lancaster, Littleton, Bethlehem, our tax rate's pretty good, our municipal tax rate. I did do a slide that shows the total tax rate. This is a little bit confusing, because what's difficult in this is that they're different school districts. So Whitefield, Lancaster, Dalton are all part of the Whiteout Regional School District. Bethlehem is part of the profile, has SIAU, and then Littleton is its own SIAU. So those school districts have a big difference. So if you look at total tax rate, it's a little bit harder to make a comparison.
All right, we have an amendment on the floor, which is to move $6,500 from the legal category to the financial administrative category. This does not change the total budget appropriation request at this point. Discussion on this amendment? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the amendment? Oh, sorry.
That, we vote, we voted down a raise this year because of the flood, and that's where they're taking the money. But, and I think it was a good choice. It's not being mean or critical, but where do we stop spending the money? I don't, you know, I'm sure she does a good job, but the thing about it is, there is, you still gotta pay your taxes, and until, let's wait till next year. Let's wait till see if FEMA's gonna come through. Things will be totally different.
Any other discussion? I think that microphone is not on, so you'll need to push it up.
Hi, that's Nan Zou, 340 Ridgeway Road in Dalton. I want to read an email that came in from the FEMA folks, well, between the FEMA folks, Milton Stoppellin and Jess Keller. And this email came from Mickey to Jess. Hi Jess, hope you are well. I wanted to let you know that Jeanette, the town administrator of Dalton, is hands down the best applicant I have ever had the pleasure of working with. She has compiled an extremely efficient detailed list of all the mitigation items per site for Blakesley Road. Her attention to detail cannot be exceeded. So many times, every, in parenthesis, the applicants are under so much pressure to maintain their daily duties as well as give us the information we can constantly request. I know that must be difficult, to say the least, and I wanted you to know that she has exceeded any expectation. Thought you might enjoy knowing that she is excellent to work with and has done an exceptional job. Always nice to have some good news. I think that's really important to pass on regarding Jess, I mean, Jeanette.
Hi, Carol Sheltry, 66 Fireway Road, Dalton. So Tom, why is there an increase, why is there an increase of $25,000 to legal? That's gonna cost the taxpayers much more money than the raise. Can you explain why you need $25,000 more?
That's not on the floor right now.
Actually, it is, because we're talking about moving money from the legal category, so I don't see a reason to stop it.
But this has nothing to do with the $6,000.
That's the amendment.
I know, that's what we're talking about.
We are.
So that's what we should be talking about.
We are talking about that.
Let's move on.
Scott Line Road, 59 Bush Road. Why is this $6,000 being moved from one category to the next? I haven't heard that explanation yet.
Yeah, the $6,500 would be to fund a raise for Jeanette as town administrator in recognition of all the work she's been doing for FEMA to get, probably a million dollars or more, over a million dollars in reimbursement, and also the work she did without an assessor as well.
So I guess I would ask that it be transparent in why we're doing what we're doing. That was never said. And I was ready to vote yes on this, till I heard that. That's under the table below me. When you start moving funds from one to the other and not telling why until you're questioned on it, that is really, really bad politics.
So we discussed this at the budget hearing. This was discussed in quite a bit of detail at the budget hearing.
Well, I don't think everybody here was at the budget hearing. Well, I'm asking it now. We have the right to ask the question now, and now it's on the floor. Now everyone knows why this money's being moved to supply a raise for Jeanette's shop, and I will vote no on that.
Tom, didn't you just explain that 30 seconds ago?
Take your questions to me, please.
Didn't you just explain that 30 seconds ago? That's what I understood. It was for a raise.
Jeanette Charon, 859 Dalton Road. Kind of strange coming up here to speak about myself, however, I want to put it out there that I originally didn't ask for a raise. The Select Board came up and said that I deserved a raise. I deserved a raise because I did all of the assessing stuff that's allowed to be done by the tax collector, or the tax collector when we don't have an assessor. And I have managed every piece of paper, every napkin, every invoice, every timesheet, every spreadsheet, every meeting, all meeting minutes for everything FEMA since the flood happened in July. Anyone who read my job description as a town administrator would see that that is not included in my job description. So why did I do it, you might ask? I did it because I'm here for the town of Dalton, and I did it because the town of Dalton deserves to have their roads in shape so that this doesn't happen again when the next flood comes. So that being said, I will say that So that being said, I will say that, that we have spent about $500,000 on fixing the roads up to this point. All of the information that I've culminated, put together in an Excel spreadsheet so that FEMA didn't have to do the extra work, is going to gross us approximately $640,000 of $500 and some thousand dollars in expenditures. In addition to that, I've spent the time, my own time, because I do not get paid overtime, to put in a mitigation plan so that Blakesley can be rebuilt to the specifications that are needed so that it does not flood to the magnitude of which it flooded in July. So our $600,000 that we were going to receive has now been increased up to $1.1 million. This is the type of work that I do. This is what I'm capable of. And I wouldn't be up here speaking about a raise for myself, which I did not originally ask for, if it wasn't okay with Tom and Eric to give everyone else a raise on the highway department, but not give me a raise. There was absolutely no response when Tom was asked about it, and when Eric was asked about it, he shrugged his shoulders as if he could give a damn. So my point is, is that I have worked just as hard as anyone on the highway department in order to get those roads done. It may not be out in the field, it may be at the desk, but there isn't anyone else here that could have done what I've done. And a lot of people have said it. So what I'm asking is to be compensated for the work that I have completed in the last year. That is what I am asking for. And that's all. And I don't think that's an unfair request. And the $6,500 that Joe Beth requested being moved has been discussed also in regular select board meetings, not just budget hearings.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the amendment which reads, move to amend Article Number Two to move $6,500 from the legal category to the financial admin category. This does not change the total budget appropriation request. All those in favor, raise your cards. I'm gonna go ahead and flip it then. All those opposed, raise your card. The motion carries. All right, so we're back to the main article, as amended. Any discussion on the main article? Here's the microphone. Jeremy O'Neal, 667 Weld Road. I'm sorry. That's Dalton Road. I did it again. I wonder if it's possible, there's been a lot of information that's been put out just in this presentation upon the board here, and some discussion from our town administrator. And I know I came up to the microphone last year and asked for a little bit more transparency, and we're seeing information for the first time tonight. Yes, budget meetings happen and select board meetings happen, and I appreciate that, but a lot of us folks are busy and don't have time to attend those. There is some disclosure about putting that stuff on the internet for those who want to see it happen. But I'm curious as to why we can't have this stuff included in this document here that comes out at its published time, especially when we're talking about $1.2 million from FEMA as a result of Jeanette's work to stabilize her roads. I'm also curious to know if we can have our road commissioner come up and explain some of his projects that he's working on that requires his equipment.
Pam Catherine, 241 Harriman Road, Dalton, New Hampshire. I'm just looking at, over the years, it's gone up, and I'm looking at we're paying more taxes and a $21,000 loss of revenue. I'm also looking at the fact that we have no guarantee of FEMA funds in this administration. So if we do not get those, we will be footing the whole bill. I would say.
Mary Goodwell, 1043 Ridge Road. I think everybody knows that if you keep things up, they break and it costs more. Let's just apply that logic to the budget. I think everybody wants roads that work. I think we can all agree that the selectmen have worked very hard, the budget committees, the people who've attended the meetings, done their due diligence, put in their input, have come up with a really good plan. That said, doesn't everybody wish that everything would cost less? I do, but it doesn't, and you know that. So when you pay more for eggs, you can gripe about it, but you're gonna buy the eggs. Okay, we need to pay for this, whether FEMA reimburses us or not, and they will, largely because of the excellent work Jeanette has done. So why not just do it? It's not that much money. Look at it, people. We pay less than the other towns. Let's stop arguing about all this stuff and pony up, because that's what we need to do.
Carol Sheltrey, 66 Farway Road, Dalton. What are the consequences if the budget is voted down tonight?
So there's this understanding amongst some people here tonight, I think, that there's a default budget, and some towns do have that. Dalton is not one of them. We're not an SB2 town. So there has to be a budget passed tonight. Certainly, there can be amendments made to it. You can reduce the number. And in order, you can change line items, you can reduce the number down to what last year's budget was. But there is just not a reality where we don't vote on a budget. That's not what we're here to do. The purpose of the town meeting is for the town to pass a budget. You are the legislatures. In order to do that, you need to move forward, and as I said, commit amendments to Article Two, but there needs to be some budget passed. Whether it's more than what's on Article Two or significantly less, that's up to you.
So it's not to vote down the budget, it's to amend the budget and then we vote on it?
We've already seen one amendment to Article Two that's passed. There can be more amendments. Those can be passed, or those can be, or they can fail. Ultimately, the main motion on Article Two is gonna come before the floor. If it doesn't pass, we'll need to continue to amend until we can reach a budget that can pass.
Thank you.
Pam Catherine, Harriman Road, Dalton. I would like to actually make an amendment to level the budget by a proposal of $1,009,300 for the operating budget. I would like to reduce it to last year's.
Second. You have it written. You have it written.
Do I have it written?
Right, yeah. All right, so Pam Catherine motioned it. Jeremy, did you second it?
Yes.
You recorded that? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It is to reduce the, or to level the budget proposal, to level the budget by proposal of $1,009,300 for the operating budget. I believe that's, in its entirety, that's what you meant? Any discussion on that? I just have a calculator handy.
Hi, Christina Ennis, 541 Simon's Road. I guess I'm, I, if that, if we reduce it or we level it to that, what does it mean for each of the individual line items? And how do we know that we'll have the money that we need to repair the roads as they need to be done? How do we know that we have the money that we need in each of the line items? I don't, I don't get it.
Some of those questions aren't gonna be decided tonight if you reduce the overall line item or the final number to the budget. I mean, there's also a concept in New Hampshire law where as long as you don't zero out any line item, you can move money between. So some of that, to some extent, doesn't matter, because there's going to be a new number if the amendment passes to about $1 million. And you can say, well, all of the line items will be reduced, but as long as nothing's reduced to zero, you can move money between the line items. Certainly, if you go significantly below $1 million, it does start to affect, you know, the needs of the town. That's obviously a decision for you guys to make. But there's nothing legally wrong with reducing the overall number.
Kathleen Fountain, 840 Road. Quick question. Can we get an actual amount as to the difference from what was requested and what we have in the budget, so we all can have a better point of view?
$197,000.
$190?
$197,000.
Okay. I think $191,586.
Yeah, I just.
$191,586.
So everybody can hear that. $191,586 is the amount it would be reduced by.
Well, and I think if you look at our expenses, you know, we've got $53,000 in highway staffing. That's so that we have people who can do the work this summer. You know, we have $52,000 in equipment. You know, do we not continue the leads with the excavator and the backhoe? You know, those are the types of decisions that I see this left board would have to Preventive maintenance is gonna save money in the long run. Do we cut down on that? I mean, you know, we've, we've got a few places we could cut, but I think when we went through, and Eric and I, I think Tom was at one of those meetings, or both of them, when we went line by line, it was easy to justify all of the line items.
Gordon Joe, 318 Ridge Road, Dalton. To go from 1.27 million, 1.2 million, down to 1,600, 9,000 is nearly a 20% decrease. Who here wants to have their salaries decreased by 20%? I don't.
Michael Trudeau, 707 Dalton Road, Dalton. So I don't see that those numbers actually work, because when you compare the lines in personal administration is not even included, it is up there, but the expenditures for the last year were $94,616. And the proposed budget is $157,000. How does, how does, how do you get 12,700 out of that? It's more like 66,000 difference there. Then you go down to personnel, personal administration. Well, the first one was financial administration. Personal administration, it says $94,615 was our expenditures, and you're looking for $157,000. How does that jive with 12,700? There's, your numbers are totally wrong.
The numbers are looking at last year's budget versus what's proposed for this year.
Well, what about expenditures?
We're looking at expenditures and what we want this year.
So if you're gonna speak, you need to come to the microphone.
So when the select board went line by line through the budget, you terminated, we looked at expenditures for last year, but also what we expected for this coming year. So there might be reasons, like we weren't fully staffed in the highway department for part of last year, so the personnel expenses would have been less. I think we hired staff in the summer, as I'm recalling. We implemented the state retirement that we discussed last year, late in the year, so those expenses would have skewed what we actually paid in 2024. So budget is not what you already, what you spent in the past year, but what you expect the expenses to be in the coming year. And the differences there are from budget to budget, not expenditure to budget.
Carl Lindquist, Starkin ledge Road. I think, you know, all of us know here, the vast majority of our budget goes to highway, to roads, and, you know, we had an extraordinarily bad year last year. And I think it highlighted a lot of the things that, that need to be done and the equipment needed to do it. So the vast majority of this $191,000 that's been proposed to remove is from the highway department. So that doesn't make any sense to me.
Michael Trudeau, 707 Dalton Road. There's one category that's completely left out up there, and that's financial administration. And last year's budget was $60,000, and this year's is more than doubled that, at $135,000.
So if I look at the details, as I look at the details, the budget last year was $126,000, and we're looking at $135,000?
So the categories in the book that DRA uses for the MS 636 were slightly different than what was used in the municipal accounting software, which, if most of you remember, last year was the first year we used that software. We started using that software in March. So there were some coding issues, and we went through this at every select board meeting in which we discussed the budget and discussed where the monies were going. And anyone with that was at that meeting remembers that I was trying to work with the bookkeeper to make sure that she got those coding discrepancies taken care of. And apparently, that happened in our software, but I can't go back to DRA and say, no, this was here and it shouldn't have been there. So while you might look at it and say, personal admin, we have a budget of 94.6 according to the, to the 636, which is DRA's form. If you look at the budget, which was handed out at the budget hearing and was also posted online on the website, you can see that personal administration category, we show a budget of 144.6, because it was categorized different than what was in DRA's program, because we hadn't started using the MRI software yet. So we had a budget in our MRI software of personal admin for 144.6. We used 94.615.
We used 94.615. We cut $40,000 out of that in employee benefits, because we didn't start the, we didn't start the retirement plan for the full-time employees when we were supposed to because of Select Board delay. So that's one of the things. The other thing is financial admin. If you look at the financial admin category in the DRA report, it shows that for 2024, we had a budget of 62.175. Our, the expenditures were 62.175, and we had appropriations of 60,200. If you look at the budget, again, that was posted on the website, handed out at the budget hearing, we have a 2024 budget of 126.035. We used 126.859. The proposed budget for 2025 is 135.616. So it's merely a situation of the category is not matching up. Again, last year was the first year that we used MRI, which is our municipal accounting software. Prior to that, we were using QuickBooks. Anyone who knows QuickBooks, try and use that to manage a municipal budget and expenditures and everything else. Good luck. So the, the proposed budget for 2025, along with 2024's budget and 2024's actual expenditures out of the accounting system, are available online for anyone that wants them, and we also handed them out at the budget hearing. So it's just merely a difference of categories. And so what Joe Beth is showing here in, in the slides that we're presenting is based off of the budget, which is what was handed out. Moving, moving forward, everything should match, because we fixed our coding from the MRI to match DRA.
Verona O'Neal, 667 Dalton Road. I just wanted to ask where the money came from to cover the extra highway expenditures that happened in 2024 that weren't planned for? Was that, did I hear it came from the capital funds?
It was from a combination. So we did use money from capital reserve funds for paving roads and for equipment. We also went to DRA to get permission to use our fund balance. So we took, where do I write?
175.
175 out of our fund balance. So hopefully, we can replenish that. And we took out of capital reserves?
About 420,000.
420,000 from capital reserves.
Okay. My question is, if that's how we paid for it in 2024, and we're expecting FEMA reimbursement, couldn't we continue to do that in 2025, and the reimbursement would cover, cover it? Why, I'm just wondering why we need to increase our entire budget instead of?
Because we are obligated as a town to appropriate what we know we need to spend. The floods were an emergency, we had to go to DRA to get permission to do those, these spends. And some of the FEMA reimbursement will cover our ongoing operating costs, but some will replenish the money we had to take from our fund balance, and also from our capital reserve funds.
I just, I mean, the continuing improvements to the road is still related to the flooding, and I'm just wondering why we need to increase the entire budget, unless we were just planning to do that for one year and then go back to the old budget.
I think next year, this Left Board should look at if we can drop the budget down, depending on cost.
How soon do we expect the FEMA reimbursement? I just think if there, if it's something that is pretty certain, why do we need to increase the budget now?
Because these are things, like when you budget, you need to budget for staff and things that you expect. That's part of the budget process, that's what's expected in municipal budgeting. That's what the Department of Revenue Administration expects the town to do.
I guess I just think with how much you're expecting to get from FEMA, like it would cover those things that were related to that.
So a municipal budget is an appropriation that gives you authority to spend. And that means that we get revenue, and the difference between revenue and expenditures is what we raise in taxes. So it's part of the process. And, you know, we get revenue in that, we don't know the amount, which is why we couldn't budget for it. So there'll be a budget hearing, an anticipated revenue, we'll have to have a budget hearing and talk about how we will handle that.
So the FEMA reimbursement, then, would prevent the taxes from covering those expenses?
Correct. Yes. So like the 43,000 that we've already received from FEMA, it was after we did the budget, so it's not in the revenue there, but it will offset the expenditures already. So that's already cash in hand, that's our first check from FEMA.
Okay. Thank you. And one more question. Is it possible to amend an amendment, or do you have to wait?
No, you can amend them.
Okay. The last amendment, we haven't voted on that, have we? The one to?
We have not, we're still talking about that one.
All right, well, I would like, if that could be amended, to include the paid raise for Jeanette. To cover that.
Okay, so we'll have to vote on the amendment, and then you'll have to bring this up when you come up to the microphone again. All right. I assume this is pertaining to the amendment?
Um, no.
Your amendment? Are you amending your amendment?
Can hear you.
Sorry. Pam Catherine.
So Pam, we really need to vote on your amendment.
Okay, please do.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment brought by Pam Catherine? Otherwise, I'll read it. Okay? Her amendment was a motion to level the budget by proposal of $1,009,300 for the operating budget. All those in favor of that leveling amendment, please raise your pink cards. All those opposed to that amendment, raise your pink cards. The amendment fails. All right, we are now back on the original mark article, as amended by the first amendment given by the, the board. Is there any further discussion? Have a request to move the question? I have a second. We have to vote on moving the question. All those in favor of moving the question, which means going to a vote, please raise your pink hearts. All those opposed, raise your pink hearts. All right. We are now at the point where we're going to end discussion on this and vote on this. So as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we had a properly signed petition to do this by secret ballot. If the supervisors of the checklist are ready, we could start doing. Anyone who has a handicap would like to be at the front of the line for receiving your voting card, please head up there right now. Otherwise, we'll start directing traffic from the back of the room, cycle when you pass the table, up to the voting box, voting box, and then back to your seat.